Since about 6:30 roughly for an executive session, we were waiting on Ben Carver who's on his way, but we won't hold things up too much. He should be here momentarily. Is there any changes to the agenda from either Keith or Ben? Changes, additions, deletions? If not, then item number four is approval of our June 10th meeting minutes, which I believe are in the drop box. If someone would like to move those, we can approve them. I'll move it.
A second. I'll look at it first then.
So we don't have an M R?
Yeah.
So wireless isn't working, right?
Yeah, it's pretty slow. The guest doesn't reach out here, but it's...
It's working.
You got it?
I'm on two.
Are you on the village or are you on this thing back here?
I think I'm on the guest one. I'm not on the way back here. I don't know.
Yeah, you're a village guest. Village guest. Good on the minutes. All right, then if there isn't anything else to add or subtract, all in favor of passing the meeting minutes from June, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? I think we'll wait for Ben for the footbridge conversation, if you don't mind, Keith.
Sure. As long as those here speak on it are okay, waiting in the lounge.
I think in an effort to wait for Ben Carver to make it, we're gonna move the footbridge conversation down one on the agenda, and we'll actually move up reports from representatives.
Are you skipping privilege over?
Nope. We'll move up representatives because Ann is here.
Perfect.
And it's all yours, Ann.
Yeah. First, I'm sorry this last month's meeting. Quite a town for a county thing. We have an outreach worker, I think I mentioned it a while ago, but we have an outreach worker in the city of Ethica that was approved a second one, so they should be starting pretty soon. And the same things they help with are people with health issues, addiction issues, people just having a hard day and trying to, it's kind of like alternatives to incarceration. You know, rather than call the police, you might call this person to say, hey, I'm sure you can help me get the services they need. And we had a property auction with some properties that were foreclosed due to back taxes, but none were in the town of Ulysses or in Truanceburg, so that's good. And have you heard that the TCAT buses, the price to Truanceburg is reduced now? Okay, so you didn't mention that?
Yep.
So for folks in the audience, if you haven't heard that, so instead of two different zones, we took the bus down to Ethica, now it's one zone. So the whole town is 28 more people. We have a new committee which I'm on regarding downtown facilities for the county because we're looking at purchasing a property to build a new facility, a centralized facility, because right now we go to different places, you know, all around the county for different services that you need. So it won't consolidate everything, but it will consolidate at least a few places that we have, like clerk and administration and things like that. And I have April sales tax numbers. Are you interested in those?
Please.
Okay. Overall, the county was up 2.6 percent and it's the same amount overall for this, about 82.6 percent into April 2019 versus April 2018. And the county's also looking at combining our facilities for the Ethica Police Department with the County Sheriff's Department. Looking at, doesn't make sense since both departments need new facilities, doesn't make sense to have one building that they co-housed in. So looking at that. That's another.
Any questions for Ann? All right, thank you. Thank you, Ann.
Hi.
How are you?
Goodness. Lovely evening. News from the county, not the county, I used to work there, now I'm saying the town, is we're meeting tomorrow and you may, is there somebody from the village who is a liaison to the Cemetery Road Bridge project? So you may already know some of this stuff, but the town, through the county, who has rented money to repair the bridge on Cemetery Road. And the town is gonna be working with Barton and Judas as the contractor to plan that work out. And the advance helped, we got clarification, the relationship between the town and county because the responsibilities for projects aren't that shared. But basically, I think the paperwork is now signed, the process will begin, what the, when and how contractors will be, you know, bids will be issued and all of that. As you know, it's a long project, but it is underway and so that will be of interest and we'll make sure that we're keeping, you guys have to do in terms of, you know, months and months away from any traffic closures or anything like that, but obviously you'll want to know since it's a frequent route for people to get from the village to the other part of the town. That's one. The other thing is that we did get state credit funding to take measures to improve water quality in our Water District Three, which is Jacksonville. And it appears that we had good enough progress with the aerator that was installed by the town, that they can, in its tank, it has dramatically lowered the TPA gins, which are the harmful thing, but not all the way all the time. And so we are going to be working with MRB, I think maybe the contract's on our agenda for tomorrow, but the expectation is that we'll work with MRB to get an aerator of our own installed in the water tank, the town maintains, I don't know, that New York Road and I don't know. So that should pretty consistently bring the levels below the thresholds that the county health department has been concerned about. So those are two projects. We purchased some, we're updating some of our machinery and sort of making sure that the right parts, with the right tractors and stuff like that, because Scott Stewart, as our new highway superintendent, is on top of making sure that everything is where we need it to be, but all within the context of a capital plan. And we are actually just now trying to become cap compliant in terms of having a thorough inventory of all of our town assets. And that's something that Michelle Wright has been helping with at the town. So those kinds of things are going on. Things that relate to the village. Our new Cemetery Road is, we now have some temporary signage up at the Habitat Nature Preserve, which is actually now sort of officially, we used to call it the Salo, you know, Habitat. Salo has been dropped from the name. It is now the Habitat Nature Preserve. And we wanted to include preserve because particularly for village residents who live nearby, there was a strong feeling that it should not become a developed park area. So very passive use. There are two trails that Marvin Prince has sort of, you know, hacked through and it is, we tried to do a little bit more marking, but we have signage that is coming. We have gotten help from, talked to Chief Nelson and also with Tom Myers to make sure that we've sort of got signage and wording that, basically it's a, if anybody's been to Smith Woods and seen the sign at the entrance there, it's a similar approach, which is please do, which is enjoy the trail, you know, respect the neighbors' rights, because we're sort of right there sandwiched in and it's not completely, we don't have a fence around it, and we have no intention of fencing all the ways, but you know, please do be respectful, please do clean up after animals, please do this. And then the please don'ts are, we're not allowing any motorized equipment, you know, or recreational vehicles in there. We did, we have made a decision that the town board has endorsed that there will be no hunting at all, the town's property. Last year we outlawed it, said we're outlawing it for now, we'll look at the issue, and it just seemed like there were too many issues to be concerned with. So no hunting at all. But because there is open property, all surrounding the town's property, there will be people hunting, people will allow, you know, use their own land or allow others to do that. So the signs that we have, like please do, please don't, we're actually gonna have some holes or some seasonal little warnings that, and so when hunting time comes, then we'll be reminding people there's no hunting and we'll be cautious because others around them may be. And we did talk with the chief, and so we've got, you know, if there are any sort of like issues about the trails or minor complaints, they're, you know, we've got the town phone number, but if people have concerns about suspicious activity, consultation with the chief, he said use the 911 number, and he encouraged us to put some wording that says, you know, violation of laws or rules will be enforced, just so that he had some law enforcement cloud to pursue a complaint if someone made it. Though we do have a dawn to dusk timeframe now, so if people are in their, again, there would be justification to go in. So we'll be finalizing those signs and then we're gonna put out on our list or a notice, sort of recapping those, inviting people to use the resource and also, and I'll put the offer out there to you, Don Ellis has been a village resident who has been on our advisory committee, and the committee's done its work now, and sort of now that things are sort of, guidelines are in place and whatnot, it's not a very, gonna be a very active committee, but we do still want local resident feedback if there are issues or decisions to make going forward. So if they're, Don is stepping off of it, and so if you know a particular village resident who's interested in that kind of thing, it's not a, well, not gonna work, it's really only a quarterly meeting at this point, but you know, that's, we will want someone, but we will also be advertising for it. So I think that's probably the thing. Oh, I guess the other thing is just to say that Ben and I will be resuming our work with the East Commission on proposal that would create a part-time year-round director and explore the transfer of programs from the village to the town. So that's inching its way from idea to public presentation for discussion.
Great. Any questions for Nancy?
Oh, I forgot. On behalf of, as a liaison to the Jacksonville Community Association, I guess later on your agenda, Tammy will report there is an event for a bit, and this coming Saturday, July 13th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the conservatory, there is going to be an event that is a fundraiser for that park, and it's called Woodstock 1869, and that one will happen, and we do have a venue, hopefully. And it's sort of like, kind of, the feel is country fair, so there will be a small admission, but there will be some toy boats kicking off, and there'll be some spoken word and dramatic things at the stage, there'll be some big trucks, there'll be, you know, some bedridden some games and things like that. So come on back, and maybe for sure announcing it, I'm hoping that we're still on their plan.
I will share the information with my boy.
I will say I was invited to sit in the dunk tank.
Oh, now I'm going.
But unfortunately, I have another fundraiser that I'm already participating in.
Are you gonna be in dunk tank?
No, this one will be, this one, this fundraiser.
Are you gonna be delegating to somebody, I was gonna say?
We certainly could. We certainly could.
Generally the person who's not at the meeting.
I think the village clerk can like dunk tank.
Who would have any fun with that, really? Who wants to dunk me?
Uh huh.
I know.
Well, thank you, Nancy. All right, so we did some shuffling of the agenda slightly to accommodate Mr. Carver. Welcome. We just opened some things around. So we will go back to the footbridge update, and I'll hand it off to Keith, who I assume is gonna hand it off to others in attendance.
Yeah, so everyone should have a written out from Alan sent, and I forwarded this on shortly before the meeting to your email boxes as well, which kind of is a breakdown. So just for review for everybody, we allowed the establishment of an unofficial community committee to look into the feasibility of using a community-built project to restore the footbridge that has been closed for several months now due to a retaining wall that is falling apart. So in this breakdown, Alan is kind of taking the steps to, based on his research and meetings with various members of our D W, the county, representative of the county, and some conversations with the E C. I've also been talking to Dusty about these same things, and so this kind of gives you a breakdown of where we're at, but maybe all that Alan can explain what he is. He and I have been communicating, but I think it's probably pertinent for him to tell the board kind of his synopsis of where the bridge is at.
So, you know, sort of, for myself, I think as we, you know, still, nothing's sort of approved, and not sure, spoke to everything there, wasn't sure if it was covered, but since the beginning of when we started doing this today, just to explain, but a number of people, Bruce Van, very much so, Rick, and two stone people, Kevin Riley, anybody's familiar with him, just recently, the cat comes in adjacent to the entrance to the falls, the little walkway to the falls, I think, so, but he's done lots, he's very well-known as a stone guy. And then Jim McKenna on Peabody Street, who worked for the Fingal Exporia for, I think, 43 years, and does a lot of stone work and local stone work. So for both of them, we set a ladder on the side of the wall, and a bunch of people there, one woman from county engineering, they, the director of county engineering didn't want, well, he signed someone to look at the project, and that person, whose name I can't remember, didn't want to make any recommendations officially because that would open up potentially can worms that would make our life more difficult potentially, and also just not within scope of what that guy does, and he's a professional engineer. So then another, Lou Thomas suggested another woman who also works for the county as an engineer, not yet certified as a professional engineer, so then she came down there and looked at the wall, and then a bunch of us looked at the walls, you know, a bunch of people shared it out. And so in consensus of opinion, you know, no concrete work really needs to be done. Actually, the support of the bridge is still very adequate on the south side, but water to the west side of the bridge has eroded behind there over years, which the neighbor will validate. Water's just come down the road and the bank of the road right by the bridge is wrong, and so there actually is a catch, a small catch, it's not a catch basin, but it's like a grave that does go into the hole on the other, on what would be on the east side, but that, the road is graded wrong at that point, so water is not going, it's going behind the wall for a period of I don't know how many years, has eroded the back of the wall, and the lower stones have sort of dropped a little bit. They're all still sort of in place, but it's, the wall is a longer straight, and these are reasonably large stones, I would say, you know, sort of 300 pound stones, a lot of them. So the idea is just to either get a local person, proctor, whoever it might be, who would put a machine there that Stacy, Casey, not Stacy, Casey would operate, or was going to operate, and then the other one would, the two would work together, one would be down in the hole there where we would just kind of connect to the rocks, move the rocks, get down to the bottom and then replace the rocks again, which isn't, it isn't really gonna make a job. To the two stone people who are also willing to participate, if you can, it's definitely willing, and Kevin is willing to. It also has an excavator, but maybe not quite large enough, so we probably just start with a little bit bigger excavator, just so we know it would be easy. It's better to have a track machine there than a powder machine, a machine that was on the tires. The track machine is just totally safe, or a robot machine might not be as safe, because to put down the extensions. So that's gonna be, and then so, so that would be repairing the wall, then we would wanna repair the drainage problem, which would be putting in, which would be reasonably simple, a catch basin attached to this culvert, which is a large diameter culvert, maybe 36 inch culvert, and then regrade at the bottom, which would also wouldn't be hard, and probably pave it then to make sure that everything that comes down that road ends up going through this culvert into the creek as it's supposed to. And I don't think it would cost very much. The rental of the machine, somebody may be generous with the machine, but if we paid hourly, say a hundred dollars an hour, if it was 10 hours, say, I don't, can't imagine it would be much more. That would be potentially a thousand dollars there. We have some ground behind the wall, and then the catch basin, I think they have what Dusty said, there's, you know, he has one sitting there. So I don't think the total expense would not be that great. Probably more, you know, a little bit of paving, and that could probably be incorporated into some paving job or something. Now, she gets some pictures, actually, all of us going down there, we're looking at one side, and we look to the eastern side, and, you know, the wall looks great on the eastern side, but if you go around the wall to the culvert, that's just some pictures of, showing you, we need to do a little bit more on that side. Somebody's put some cinder blocks and some other kind of material to prevent maybe what this culvert was putting in, and there's a little erosion there, but again, it's just stones, it's easy to fix. And once, once the drainage problems are rectified, this wall should be fine.
Well, I certainly appreciate all the homework you've done on this. Have, do we have anything conclusive and in writing from D E C about what they may or may not require?
No, maybe a little miscommunication. The D E C, and I wrote in here, some people suggest that we communicate with the D E C, some people say we don't need to communicate with D E C. That's gonna be, you know, you guys make that decision. But then, there are certain times of the year, it's mainly fish that they don't wash in, and we're not gonna really work in the creek at all, although we'd be on the creek on the wall or the creek side. So I would be happy to pursue, you know, whatever we need to do to get permission and to get in there at the right time. You know, we wanna get in there when the water's on high, it's a lot easier than, well, it's...
Because I think in order for the village to authorize our DPW to do anything in there, we're gonna need something concrete from the D E, no one intended, something definitive from the D E C in email or in writing stating that they do or don't approve of us doing anything or nothing in that area, and that if they, as is probably likely, if they say you need to check these boxes first, then we can begin the process of investigating what those boxes actually entail. But I can't, and I'm not speaking for the full board, but I can't see my way to authorizing DPW to begin work without knowing conclusively what D E C wants.
Yeah, well, so that's the decision, and let's, let's just go down that road and, you know, apply for permit from D E C. I think it's a, I think, sort of, for me, before, you know, it's been too many years in this thing, if the village is willing to go down this path, we'll apply for permit to D E C, and they'll give us some criteria, what they expect us to do, and, you know.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's fair. If D E C comes back and says, you know, we need X, Y, and Z, and X, Y, and Z costs a lot of money, then we'll have to reconsider. If it's, if it's a simpler road to go down, then I don't, I don't see a reason not to take the next step. But for me, the next step is something more conclusive, not to just go on a, you know, as you said in your email, some people think we need their, we need their permission, some people think we don't, so there's a whole lot of opinion in there, and none of it is conclusive, and none of it's from the D E C, which is, which is what I want to see.
No, sure, the county woman said, you know, you wanna get a permit from the D E C, you know, some people say that experience with the D E C, that you don't, you know, for just a repair like this, you don't. I don't know, and I'm happy to, I, my gut feeling is from the village is probably not the ideal idea to have a permit if you do something like that. So let's just apply for permit and find out what they say, you know, they may.
Yeah, let's find out, let's find out as conclusively as we can.
Yeah, and I can do that together with Dusty, you know, if you like, you know, I'll contact them, find out who the person is.
And then if you would, I was hoping she'd be here tonight, but if you would loop Deb Watkins in.
Sure.
On all of it, that would be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Good.
And, you know, I can do, you know, or I can, yeah, have to do that.
Great.
And then I would, you know, also a great, another skilled professional on this stuff, you know, willing to discuss. We got a bunch of, Bill Saybo, you know, Cornell.
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm actually less concerned about, at least initially, I'm less concerned about the work, part of it, as opposed to the not having our ducks in a row and then doing the work part of it.
Yeah. On, you know, with, with.
Good.
On that long here, just a couple, just a couple, I moved on the porch, you know about this, but I moved on the porch, so everybody knows, this giant, which is your historian, Sandy List, and Mayor, you know, talking a little bit about this, and got communicating with Julia at the farmer's market, and so we were talking about, and that's been putting it at the farmer's market, it was still a discussion, but we have like a little committee that's reviewing the plan, and where it maybe best go, and how it would look when it got there. And so one of the goals for the History Center, which had it outside, and this was made by Durant, who did some of the metalwork, and this woman , Amber, who's whack, if anybody knew what Lars, or I don't know, but anyway, it was sitting outside the History Center, and wanted that. So I just figured, just, so we can move a little forward, sort of spur the moment, I had a truck, and I think it could help me, and we brought it here. And then I got to thinking, well, before we bring it to the market, just stick it outside of one of the DPW buildings, you know, perhaps we put on a porch here and get a little attention. And so I looked on the other porch, I think it's more than sturdy enough to support the weight there. And if people can give their suggestions to the committee, which Sandy List will be sort of the lead of the committee, and Julia's participatory committee, several of us on the committee, and Alice Gann.
So are you all familiar with the story of the Tegannic Giant?
I'm really excited.
Nobody is.
I was reading by Alan one afternoon.
So it was, oh, was it mid-19th century?
It's like 1863, I think. First, there was one in Syracuse. Somebody pulled this off in Syracuse and made some money. So the guy owned the hotel, or the man who owned the hotel by the overlook at Tegannic, it was a good hotel. So people, they were gonna work on the road, so some people took and dug on the side of that's where the road is, and kind of shoved this thing under so that when they worked on the road, they'd find it. You wanna tell it, or you?
No, I don't care.
And it was just written up, and we think it's time. And it was just written up in the, at the time. I mean, it's, it's, it's got some press, this particular one was written up. So then, and then the other one in Syracuse, there's a name for it, which is really quite famous, nationally famous. And this one is a little bit too. So then they find this thing and it was made out, it's something very organic, I forget what it was, but it's in the story of the time. But anyway, so they made this thing and it wasn't as big quite as this one. And, and it got a lot of excitement and nobody, nobody thought it was real. And so the guy said, and over, started charging admission. Cause that was his goal, is to bring attention to this hotel and just bring attention to, and it worked. And, uh, and so that went on for a while until they, you know, confessed that, you know, it wasn't real. That was sort of the end of the story. But it, it's a, it's quite a famous folklore story right there.
So it was, it was a hoax and a prehistoric discovery, it turned out not to be. So, um, is it Anne Marie?
Swag.
Anne Marie, um, created a replica of it. And Duran did the metalwork around it. So it's been sitting at the history center and the history center wanted to get rid of it, as Alan said. So Sandy and I had talked about it. She felt that it's a Truman'sburg thing, it should be displayed somewhere and it's a piece of local history. And she had talked to the park about, about placing it permanently at the overlook because that's where their first one was discovered and that seemed like a natural place for it being a nice piece of, of local history attached to what is now the overlook and there used to be a hotel there, et cetera. Fred Von wanted no part of it. So then she felt like it's a Truman'sburg thing, so where can we put it? So she and I talked about it and we thought that, well, either a nice display built in Tammy's office or potentially at the farmer's market where more people could, could see it. So she and Alan and Julia and I were saying, okay, well, where exactly at the farmer's market can we put it? Where it'll be well seen, well, well trafficked, but also relatively safe and it's also getting a little bit crowded down there, which is a good thing because it means there's a lot of people there. So in the meantime, while they're figuring all this out, you know, sit outside the side door for Tammy to see when she comes and goes.
A little more.
Replica. And so, and you can see it's just somewhere up there.
A real prehistoric. But it's not even a hoax.
No, it's a replica.
It's a replica.
And it's, and it's, it's bigger than the original one. But where's the original? The original's gone. But, um, you know, at the farmer's market, if we were to go, here's, here's the plan. Just sort of here's the plan there. But this is, this, you know, this is just a plan, if it got there or what we might do, it's make it look like an architectural dig and have Berge Van Gurgis, if you all know who these characters are, you know, kind of antique this thing and make this dig look real. And then build like an old looking board roof, very old. So like it's buried at this grade here or below the grade, there's like a roof, so kids can sort of play on the roof and look up there, kind of a flat, safe roof. So it becomes sort of a little kids activity as well and, you know, kind of protects it from too much damage of people throwing things on it. So that's sort of maybe if it goes there. But, you know, we're looking for suggestions and again, Sandy List is sort of the lead on this, has, you know, more opinion. It doesn't have to go there. It could go, you know, we could do the same sort of thing here, you know, it could go anywhere if we wanted to go. And pretty, I think it's July 4th next year is maybe the anniversary of this thing, 150 years or something. So, you know, ideally by January, by July 4th next year, we have this whole thing results.
If we'd been thinking, I realize it's heavy, but if we'd been thinking ahead, we probably should have figured out a way for it to pop up as Tammy.
That'd have been fine. I was last one in this morning. It would have been fine. These two would have died on the.
But if you get, if you get a look at it and have any ideas.
And, you know, when we did the mini village, the first building we built, we didn't really have a plan. And I don't know how many remember, but we built, built the one, this little schoolhouse and this Jolene Unico's memory. We put it in the front yard here and then all of a sudden, after a little bit, we came up with a whole plan and we built it over there and the whole bit. So it's, but it sat outside here for a year. So, you know, it's kind of a good place.
Good. Great, thank you.
And what, we're going to do the sidewalks on weeks, we delayed it again today, just a little bit further, it's going to be after the rest. We may start a couple of days before the rest, like not this Wednesday, but the next one, they just do a little bit of territory work, but then the following week, sort of like the 20th century or something, 21st or whatever, we're going to do that job.
Good. Great.
Thanks.
Item number six, which we've danced around a couple of times is public comment period number one. If anyone would like to comment from the public, yes?
So I'm Dawn McDonald, I live next to the footbridge. I'm here, we might be making some progress there. I will show you the pictures of the retaining one on the other side, just in case anybody's curious as to how that side is, what's happening on the other side of it now. There is a drainage problem on my side of the street. Okay, big culvert pipe is rusting out and has holes and the water, as it comes down the hill, doesn't actually stay in the pipe, it runs alongside the pipe. So it's caused like a sinkhole effect at the end of my driveway. And I think that's what's taking out this corner now because the water had to find a way, place to go. And I think that's what's, because this was not like this before. So this is fairly recent falling out. I don't know when they're planning to fix that culvert pipe. I've got a big cast iron plate over the end of my driveway, has been there for quite some time. I don't know, they talked about sweeping this big pipe, but it just, I was just curious as to when something might actually happen. Cause it would need to be done before he gets to go in and do the good stuff he wants to do, so.
Okay. We'll add that into the, to the mix. Any other public comment? Going once.
I've mentioned this before years, several times, I really think it'd be good if we had a sidewalk committee of, you know, whatever you want, however it would be, where we looked at prioritizing sidewalk repair in the village and just sort of pack it on the, um, some rotational basis that we do a little bit each year. I've done for a little while, it serves a lot of sidewalk community, which is terrific, sidewalk water. But it would be good, one that's been talked about a lot, is the one building's a conservatory. That's one, you know, a lot of people are saying stuff about that. But if we could just prioritize and have a committee and, you know, have a system of some sort, so we can just do, you know, 300 feet or 400 feet or something like that isn't that much and doesn't cost her any much and, I mean, and even repairing existence, so that actually is an exercise, repairing in other areas where it's not quite wide enough or, you know, just.
Okay. That's a good idea. Any other public comment?
And there goes the audience.
They'll be pleased by the press.
And don't feel bad, it's okay.
All right.
Well, I did want to offer this compliment, I'm going to need chairs.
Thank you.
Yeah, me too.
So seeing no more.
They're hard.
Seeing no more public, we will move on to item number eight. Board member reports, starting with fire, CPZR and farmer's market.
Well, Alan gave all of my updates. So I was going to mention the giant at the farmer's market and as well the sidewalks on South Street, but we've covered those. So I'll circle back to fire to start. I do have.
I'm just kidding. You don't have a mic.
Yeah, so the internet's not good right now, so, yeah, 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 that's all right. So we're just going to go with the recording and I'll post that later. And I have a fire report, but I don't know if I can get to it actually right now. However, I was talking to Chief just today and they are looking at needing additional turnout gear beyond even the ones that we kind of put together towards the end of last fiscal year, so just a month ago. They've got a couple of members taking a class and they were told they couldn't do any live burns because their gear wasn't in the current date ranges. So he would like to have us talk about a referendum for, a reserve referendum for 1,500 from the fire equipment reserve line for additional turnout gear to replace the oldest stuff that we have. So I'll make a motion to, for a permission referendum for 1,500 from the fire equipment line, sorry, 15,000, sorry, 15,000, that's a different number. He said that there should be 20,000 in there from this year's budget. And that's what he'd like to use that towards.
Do you have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this some addition to the 10,000 any generally? So he's going to buy 15 more?
Yeah.
Cause we do have a turnout, he has a budget line for turnout gear.
Right.
So I assume he's just going to buy additional.
Yeah, it sounds like they need to kind of jumpstart. And I know that they've got, there's something a little bit weird, I don't remember the details, but they, they got a grant at one point and bought a bunch and a lot of it's kind of aged out in one chunk, so they kind of need to get up the ton, talk to that a little bit. I can talk with them about seeing if we can stagger that a little bit better going forward, but it sounds like they've got more immediate need.
Maybe just put more in his budget.
Maybe we should, maybe we should throw that into the replacement cycle spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So you can spread it out a little bit, replace the next set a year early and spread it out.
Yeah.
Any other discussion or comments on this? Just so long as he's aware that he can't put money into equipment.
Right, yeah, that'll be.
A little more.
Right, I know, it just needs to.
Yeah, it's a.
That's not going.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, or maybe it's going as planned again. I know this was, that was one of his fours for equipment and this is equipment. I'm sure they probably wanted other equipment as well, but I know that they've been aware that the turnout gear has been in need for a while as well. They've got, there's so many, so much overhead or, you know, kind of timeline and guidelines that you have to use things by, it kind of gets ridiculous. And it's particularly difficult, I think, in, in a smaller area that has fewer, you know, actual fires that you go to over 10 years or something, their equipment's less actually used, but 10 years is 10 years or whatever the time really is and so there you are.
All right, then if there isn't any additional discussion, then all in favor of approving this permission referendum for turnout gear, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Anything else?
Uh, yeah, plenty of other things. Update on CPZR, we've got our next meeting this Thursday, the 11th at 6:30. We'll continue to review some parts of the existing comp plan, looking at a draft outline for the new comp plan. And we're slowly moving towards probably an October timeframe, public meeting, formal public meeting that we'll start trying to talk about how to, what the content should be and how to promote that and get that out from the community. So that's where CPZR sits.
What's, uh, what's the plan when you're talking about October for public meetings? What's the plan for kind of the open public meeting input version where you get feedback from the community on various aspects of it?
Yeah, no, that's, that's the idea. At that, at that point, we should have a proposal for a new vision statement, probably a proposal for an outline. Hopefully have reviewed the existing goals and action items from the existing comp plan and kind of organize those around what we hit already, what's maybe no longer relevant for whatever reason. Potentially some new ideas of what we'd like to see going forward and kind of, as well as we'll have the character areas, kind of finding the various neighborhoods organically as they are around the village and kind of talking about the, what each one encapsulates and what its character is. And I think we'll have kind of a structured review of that to get feedback around what you like, what you dislike, what parts of different neighborhoods would we like to see more of, less of, you know, does the vision kind of encapsulate where we want to go? So EDR will, is helping us kind of shape and understand that, but that's where we're kind of leaning towards an October timeframe on that. So we'll continue working with them to figure that out. In preparation for that, we'll likely have a September meeting, we'll include a smaller set of stakeholders. Still working with EDR as to what that meeting is going to look like and whether they, who would they want to join that. But I'm thinking probably planning, our planning board, the Ulysses Town Planner, maybe ZBA, I'm not quite sure how much broader or narrower they want to go with that, to kind of get a first pass of input around what areas should we be thinking about with this new comp plan that maybe we haven't, we don't have expertise within the group to, to think about, what should we be having as bullet points in that outline, concerns that we should be bringing into process and kind of addressing or capturing in some way, so.
Okay, good.
Um, that is updates from those three pieces, though I did want to talk about two other kind of side projects that have been ongoing. One is an early conversation around something called community choice segregation. So I've been talking with Terry from Corporate Extension around this. This is a, if anyone's looked at their NICE egg bill, when you sign up for it, you get a default like NICE egg electricity. And they decide who is going to provide your electricity, is it coal or water or hydro, whatever it is, they just kind of decide for you. The state has allowed municipalities to say, we think we can do a better job than NICE egg, we can group by together, get a better rate, find a better mix of energy, whatever it might be. And it's starting to kind of take off as, as an opportunity for communities to do a rather, have a rather large impact on the community going green. You can specify 100% renewables and that cost structure is starting to come to a point where you can often get that at a reduced rate beyond what NICE egg's already providing. So there was previously a county committee through TCOG that was kind of looking at this. At the time, it sounded like the pricing wasn't there and it would have been a net increase in cost, which people weren't comfortable with if they wanted to go 100% renewable. But it looks like that's changed and some others kind of conversations around that. It wouldn't likely make sense for us as just Truman'sburg, we don't quite have the housing size to really demand a, a good price. But I'd ask it to just be kept generally in, in the loop and they might, it might go to TCOG as well, should there be a larger push from the county or a number of communities that could kind of band together and get a good price on that, it might be something interesting for us to look at. Certainly be a huge way to reduce the general footprint, part of the footprint of the, of the village, so. Something on, on the horizon potentially. And then the last thing to give an update is Keith and I sat down with the Incremental Development Alliance, they're a nonprofit, I think based out of the Midwest, but they've got, they kind of are loosely affiliated with developers all over the country, specifically here, someone in, we had, at the meeting, we had a developer from Buffalo, someone who does kind of economic development modeling in Rochester came down as well. I think there was another person as well from Rochester, Syracuse that joined. They were brought here by the county, county planning, trying to help foster more development in the more incremental development, smaller developers, taking a building, renovating it or kind of, you know, turning it over in some way or another. Something to kind of fill the gap between, you know, building your own house and a hundred million dollar project that we see in Attica, right? Kind of try to fill that gap in between. So a really great conversation here, talked a little bit about, you know, what are type of things we could do to help reduce some of the empty storefronts on Main Street. Was kind of the initial conversation with that kind of spun into, do we have the housing density and the population density to support those, those storefronts, you know, it's kind of a larger ecosystem when you think about it, that led into talking a little bit about our zoning as well. So they're kind of interesting conversations that have led, that will lead into, I think, some of the stuff that CPZR will look at when it comes to zoning. And we ended up taking a walk down Main Street and looking around. So we had a really good time with them. They may come back in the fall and talk more specifically about zoning. They kind of looked over our zoning quickly in the meeting and had some really interesting insights. My thought is to probably bring in a couple of representatives from CPZR into that and continue to kind of have that conversation with, you know, whoever's interested. We had had Todd Parlato had joined that because we were talking specifically about the property next to Atlas. Next Atlas, that's kind of an initial jumping off point. Also had Rick from the planning board and Steph Bailey, right?
Elaine.
Sorry, and Elaine from the chamber. Sorry, that's not... Yeah, so it was a good mix of people and had a really productive conversation.
Good. Any questions for Ben? Right, EMS youth and street tree advisory.
Not much on EMS, it's not what we're talking about, except for saying, you commissioned, we had sort of a fun exercise over the last month where we thought we were going to be the medical director for camp, decided she didn't want to be. We had a sort of brief little field employee, which it turns out is a very important role, you can't not have one. So we were scrambling, Nancy was, you know, the email back and forth on that was, it was not fun, but in the end, it was resolved, we'll make it through another year, but I think it put sort of a fine point on what Nancy mentioned earlier, sort of transfer and all of that stuff, but that was, I mean, aside from that, can't be running, these are, you know, it's, it's good, we've started a new summer. As far as the stack goes and trees, we have almost finished our draft, which is not a good sign. I was thinking to Rorden and Guy initially, just to like knock down the high points, which I'm sure are there, and everyone here of that, that tree law, so hopefully that is nearing completion. And we have started to do, we realized, I mentioned before that there were a couple trees in the village that were just like death traps that we needed to deal with. And we hopefully have those on asplants lists, I've gone back to sort of Dusty periodically, and it's like, asplants sort of does whatever they want, in the same way that NICEAG does. So those are waiting, but we realize that we don't want to play favorites with, like landowners should have trees, if we may then be coming to other landowners and saying, you know, this is, your trees are also problematic after having just done these three trees. So we thought it would be a good idea to do sort of a more comprehensive inventory of the village, just looking for death trap trees, for lack of a better word. So looking for the ones that are an imminent risk to life, like specifically life, so not, you know, there's a lot of trees, a lot of village trees even that are dangerous that will hurt you probably, like the state of trees in our village is sort of, but so we're looking for the worst of the worst, and we'll meet in a couple of weeks and see how many there are, we've only divided up the village, so where I was, there were very few, but there are many, so we'll see. I'll keep you on the other side, so we'll get there.
Hey Ben, when you're rewriting the street tree law, will you keep in mind that when we repeal and replace our street tree law that we have now currently is also the sidewalk law? So we're going to have to do some finagling?
Right, I think we'll have to repeal that law, but yeah.
Right, so we'll need to write, rewrite the sidewalk or, or put it in its own form because it is part of that law?
Right, so we're not really altering what's in that law. We're not, they can both exist simultaneously without interfering with each other.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but obviously, I'm sure we'll have a opinion about that, but that is my...
Gotcha.
That's my...
Perfect.
But that's, that's ours.
Good. Deb is excused, so we have no DBW orders, so a report from her. Keith, police, T-Cog and TACC.
Starting with the police department, stats for June, two hundred and forty-eight calls per service, this is about a sixty or seventy call jump from last month. Seven of those calls for service came from outside the village in the county Ulysses. We investigated one domestic dispute, one criminal mischief investigation, and we assisted with five other law enforcement agencies. We had one criminal arrest for VNT law DWI and drug possession. So things weren't boring in June. Way back on Porch Fest. On the good news front, Officer Ben Wright has completed police mountain bike patrol officer training and is now a New York State municipal bike patrol certified officer. So if we see more Ben Wright on bike, it'll be great. Our trainee, Brooke Owens, is doing very well, and Chief Nelson thinks that she's on pace to become a future part-time officer here, which will fill a, a need. I think, if I understand him correctly, what we're seeing is our full-timers are doing great, but that has made part-time officer need really spotty, and it's kind of tough to get commitments from officers when it's that spotty. So having someone that can come in, be trained here, jump into part-time service, he's very excited about that potential. Do you believe we just reached our agreement with Grassroots on police service and the burn berry contract with Grassroots is forthcoming? And other good news is, I believe we've been awarded some grants. Is that correct? One grant that we know, we applied for three?
I, yeah, I think so.
And we've heard about one?
What, twenty-six hundred and thirty dollars?
Yes. Joe, Joe wanted me to confirm that number with you, that is twenty-six hundred, okay. So that's for equipment or, or traffic?
I don't have the details of that, I'm going to be open.
Okay. Either way, we have twenty-six hundred and change coming our way. We have a grant, so that's the first you've heard back on, so that's good. Truittsburg Area Chamber of Commerce, we had a good Porch Fest, weather was good, looked well attended, I don't have data, actually any data points from Elaine, but I'm hoping at our next meeting, maybe some business owner share, they saw an uptick, especially compared to her last year. Grassroots gets going a week from Thursday, and the crit is one, one month away, which is something we'll revisit later on the agenda. I mentioned last month that I had reached out to DOT regarding crosswalk to not my dad's and potential ideas for slowing down traffic in our business corridor. That individual had sent me to somebody else who I've connected with, sent along photos for some of the trouble areas and our concern with regards to crosswalk and the business corridor speed, and so waiting to kind of hear back on what they think they can do. I said I know these things don't typically get turned around quickly, but Grassroots is coming up in a couple of weeks, so that crosswalk, we'd get a lot of use if we were able to get it in, so we'll see if they think they can do that. Well, I haven't realized, did want to thank Ben for organizing that, being the Incremental Development Alliance, thought that was really informative, it was great to have Elaine and Todd there, representative of other boards. And I found the voters who came from the other cities really enthusiastic and knowledgeable, and they seemed really excited, and I think that's a testament to the potential that we have as our village. They seem really impressed that we are a small village, but have so many services within our village, and that can make overcoming some of these storefront issues a lot easier to, to deal with. And I did enjoy getting some tips for how maybe we can encourage people squatting in empty storefronts to maybe do something with them, so that was fun. Thank you to Elaine for coming in to talk about the bridge. One thing that I would just add that I didn't get a chance to interject about is really the, the catch here with the bridges, from the DDC perspective, there's any kind of sediment disturbance that can happen, that essentially triggers the need for the Army Corps of Engineers to submit an engineer plan. And I'm worried that it's highly unlikely that all the work he just described won't disrupt sediment, or even the sides of the creek that could potentially lead to more erosion, they're going to need to be involved. Sounds like everyone's in agreement on that, but I just wanted to stress that, you know, it's important that we take that step, because the village does not want to be liable for upridge having issues. It already has issues, so. Now, talking to Dusty, he thinks it's possible that perhaps they provide the plan and they allow the community build to execute that plan. So that could maybe be the ideal scenario. And then the really thing at T-Cog for us would be the LED program, still waiting to hear we've reached the necessary threshold, but I believe all of our i's are dotted and t's are crossed with regards to still having an active offer from NICEAG, per Ted Palmer's response. And I believe we found out that we're not leasing poles, is that what Ted said? We thought we were leasing poles from NICEAG, the poles...
We definitely are leasing, I mean, we, we pay for those poles.
Okay, but he, his response was something like, we don't own them, NICEAG doesn't own the poles.
No, I don't think so, yeah, that's not what I understood, but...
Okay, then maybe we're fine there too.
Just to step back, because everyone's looking at our light poles, there's a, Nikon is also looking at light poles just to make sure that NICEAG isn't proper charging us, so, I don't know, just figured we'll all look at light poles together.
Yeah, that's fine.
I put him in touch with Terry, so at least they're talking.
It hurt my life that I imagined I'd be having a conversation about, being excited about light poles. Here we are, we're loving it. Though I did not mention for the chamber side, Friday is the Truittsburg Rotary Golf Tournament. Mayor Hark and I and Chief Joe Nelson will be representing, believe, did we all play together last year or was it a different tournament? We played, the three of us played together at a different tournament, and we're looking to do much, much better, so.
Which golf course?
The Truittsburg Golf Course. If you live, if you, if you're watching, oh, we're not live, you live along number ten there, get indoors with that sport. And that's it for me.
Okay. Trevor, Ricky?
I've been free ten minutes last three weeks, so I have a lot of catch-up to do. I wish I had more to report about, I hope it'll get done.
We got my email today about that, reservations.
Yep, so...
Clark, Amy?
So tax collection for on-time payments is complete, and we have eighty-five thousand dollars outstanding that we need yet to collect, which is really good. It's about average for where we are usually at the beginning of July. So all is good in the tax world. On my desk or on my table, I have two temporary event permit applications. One is for the event that Nancy was talking about, Woodstock eighteen sixty-nine. I didn't, in going through this application, I didn't find anything alarming, however, I do have some concerns about traffic impediment and food trucks blocking residential neighborhoods. So I'm going to talk to, I'm going to give Pete and Angie a call tomorrow just to see what that plan is, because that's a small block and those streets are very narrow, and that is my concern.
They're not going to be on the street, they're going to be next to the building near their parking lot. What, what food truck?
Okay, well, okay, so that's where my other concern, because it says food truck, and you said food trucks, so that is very different.
It's going to be one, and it's going to be...
Okay, so it's in the parking lot and not on the street? Okay, so other than that, all of the department heads have seen this and signed off with the exception of Jason, who I did talk to, and I'm hoping to catch him, but, so as far as I'm concerned, this one is in good shape, other than Jason signing off, that he's aware. So I will go ahead and, and issue that tomorrow, or Wednesday when I get back into the office, Nancy. So you should be outside. The second one that I have is for, it's further down on the agenda, is for the T-Bird crit in August. Jess and John have done a really good job of keeping me up to speed on any changes. There really isn't any from last year, it's very par for the course. I know that they did ask us to give them a mailing list for the neighborhoods, we did that, a mailing went out. We have gotten a little bit of feedback, but I've directed them to you, so I don't know if you've heard from anyone. So unless there are any concerns, I'm going to go ahead and issue this permit as well for August. And I think that's it.
Good. Any questions, Tammy? So under my report, I have the, what's the word I don't want to use?
Sad.
Sad to announce that Neil Henninger of our ZBA submitted his letter of resignation from that board effective this first, this last week, this first week of July. Neil has served on our ZBA for almost twenty years, and I do want to publicly acknowledge and thank Dr. Neil for his service over the years. I think it's always tough when you lose that kind of significant experience on any type of board. He's resigning for perfectly, perfectly good reasons. He and his wife are relocating their permanent residence outside of the village. He will continue to operate his business here in the village, but his official residence will no longer allow him to remain on our ZBA, so. So thanks to Neil Henninger for his many, many years of service to the village, and we're certainly sorry to see him go. That does then create a vacancy on the ZBA. Neil was just reappointed to a five-year term in April, so it's my duty to fill that vacancy for what would be the remainder of Neil's terms, so four years and eight months, nine months. So I've met with Noah Demerist, who is someone, a newer resident of the village, but he brings a lot of experience to the table. He is an architect by profession, he has sat on other planning boards and ZBA's in other municipalities locally. He's been on the other side of the table as an architect in ZBA and planning board meetings on many occasions, and he has, none of those experiences have scared him away from sitting on a ZBA again, which I think is probably a prerequisite these days. So I, I was very impressed on, on meeting him, and I expressed my thanks to him for being willing to, to take on the role. So effective immediately, I am appointing Noah Demerist of Wigg Street to the vacant position on our ZBA vacated by Neil Henninger. That is effective immediately. I'll get contact information.
He emailed me already, I'm good.
And then he can sign the swear book whenever.
Yep.
And I don't believe there's a ZBA meeting scheduled, so he'll have some time to, to ease into it. If, if, Ben, I don't know if you know him, if you want to meet him, certainly get you his email address if you want to reach out, I'll do the same for Deb, as well as have Tim Hamilton reach out to him. The next item I have is, I need the board to authorize me to sign the police agreement between Grassroots and the village. It's taken on various forms over various years for various reasons. This one, this version simply states that the festival is asking for additional overall police presence, it's not specific to the fairgrounds, it's not a contract for that fence line between the fairgrounds and the Falls Tavern property, which is a different contract that we have at times used in the past, but Grassroots is not requesting that this year. What they're simply doing is stating that they would appreciate additional staffing by the village PD as Chief Nelson sees fit, and for that, Grassroots is going to reimburse the village a total of four thousand dollars for any costs associated with that. It's not, not based on a certain number of additional staffing, it's not... It's not, not based on a certain number of additional staffing, it's not, it's not an hourly-based calculation, it's simply, in essence, almost a, an honorarium for asking Chief for additional staffing as, as he needs, and Chief estimates that that number should about cover what he thinks he may need to do in additional staffing. So I would entertain a motion to authorize me to sign this contract with Grassroots.
So move?
Second. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
What was the total last year?
$3,000.
Last year was $3,000. In the past...
Well, that was going to ten.
Well, there's been a couple of different contracts that were used. The one we're most familiar with was for actual foot patrols on the fence lines between...
Right.
And that's, that's no longer being requested. For many years that was requested, and that was done at an hourly rate, based on our overtime rate. This version is simply for additional overall staffing.
Does that change officers that are assigned to that detail to a different rate? It's just straight home?
Unless, unless they're on overtime then.
Okay. Do you hear that?
Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, then hearing none, and all in favor of authorizing me to sign this contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
No. I don't want to do the best there anymore.
No, that's all right. And that's what I have, other than what we're going to be discussing further down the list. Item number nine is acknowledgement of correspondence. We don't have any specific, other than Alan's email now.
We had the one about the crit from...
We did, we did receive a letter about the crit. From...
I guess, yeah.
No, there was also a letter from...
This is for you.
Yep. But we'll, we'll talk about that some more in a couple of, couple of items.
There's a hard copy in the mailbox, I don't know if you've gotten yours recently.
Oh. Old business, made office for weatherization.
Yes, so, I now have two quotes for work specifically to insulate and seal off all of the crawl spaces and various basement areas that we have throughout this building of ours. They come in at 12,000, 12,500, so they're very, very close together. One from Halco, one from Snug Planet. It's pretty straightforward work, there's not very much difference between the two of them, and without much difference, I'm, I'm kind of inclined, I've talked with Halco, they like to actually defer to Snug Planet in this area, they kind of feel like it's more snug's on turf, and we had kind of ups and downs with Snug, but they certainly understand the building and various aspects of it, so I'm kind of inclined to go with them, even though they're a little bit, they're the 12,500 bid. I'm thinking about going back to them and kind of finagling maybe another, they want to do a lower door test at the end, and I was wanting to see if we could get one at the beginning as well, to see how much of a difference we actually make here, which might be a nice little point of information going forward. So my recommendation would be to have a press referendum in the order of, say, $13,000 to be saved from the, I can't remember which one it is, the Village...
Own building.
Building, building with her, for the sealing and insulation of the basement, kind of the various under-story of this building. So the real intent here is to try and shore up all those cold floors that we're experiencing over the winter, and trying to just, especially deal with the, well, and the, we have that frozen pipe in the bathroom over there. This doesn't include a heater specifically for that area, but the thought is, let's insulate everything and hope that that kind of makes a, makes a big difference, and if we need to kind of go back and touch up and add an electric baseboard here in that back bathroom or something, we can pull that in as an export, or another part.
Florida, Florida's get cold, you know, it's, is it?
No, I'm still using a space heater.
So the air conditioning works, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I think he's trying to freeze us out.
We're trying to figure out how that air conditioning...
We need like a rotating desk thing, you know, like the whole floor just rotates.
Disco situation.
Yes.
Yeah, I like it.
Ben gets me.
Is there any truth to the rumor I heard that Snug and Halco, or that Halco and Snug are working together, anywhere?
So all, I don't know that, but they are very friendly. Certainly their own management both like know each other well. When the Halco guy came out, he was like, "We don't really typically even bid if Snug is going to come in and do a bid as well," but he's like, "I'll give you one, because I know you need multiple bids, but we probably would defer to Snug if you could," kind of a thing. And they said that they coordinate sometimes, and Snug's initial bid was for some attic work and some storm windows and lots of different things, and I said, "Okay, I'd like to focus kind of like what's on the, on the basement," and they came back with something that was pretty much line for line with what Halco gave us, so they may have even talked about it. I don't really understand the connection that...
Are there any, are there other companies? Because I, I remember lots of stories about how, wow, that was a terrible experience with Snug, and not all like bad, that's in the public field.
Yeah.
Like, I would see an alternative, I mean, you got the folks paid, but it was not great.
Yeah, it was, it was not. I think they are seemingly perennially overwhelmed, and so that ends up in the reaction, like you don't get responses for long periods of time.
I was reading your bid, and one of the lines is "talk to the fiberglass insulation backup," which is insulation that they pulled down, and I laughed at that one. Well, I mean, it's...
Yeah.
If they're, I mean, if there's only ones that do it, it needs to be done, and that's fine.
I mean, so we do have a quote from Halco, we could go that direction.
I have no experiences with Halco, that they actually have. I'm, I'm asking, is there like a...
Yeah, so, so I, and I kind of asked both of them, and I almost wish my dad had stuck around, because he could speak more accurately to it. It sounds like there are maybe independent contractors here and there that will do spray foam, but it, this is a little bit more than just kind of come in and spray foam the section, there's a bit more of a sealing aspect to it and a, like a moisture management situation, so the sense I've got is, this is really kind of the two people that do this in this area, unfortunately, and so I think that's part of why they end up being so overwhelmed, and so...
And there's no alternative.
Yeah, so...
Community build?
That's what I was thinking.
Side walk, bridges, insulation. So this is, because we're using the air source heat pumps, though, this is not really a, a long-term cost saver as much as it is a comfort?
It's a little bit of everything. Part of it is that now that boiler's off, and it's not just venting random heat into the basement that then also heats the basement, so like, on the one hand, that's good, because that's just heating up space, we don't need any speed up. It's certainly, I mean, when you look down there, there's just holes out to the outside, like there, like there's places where there's literally nothing between you and outside downstairs, so it's kind of stuff that needs doing anyhow. It was brought more to a head because the heat pumps are kind of sized for the size of building, the size of space that they're trying to heat, and with the, all that cold air coming up through the basement, coming up through the floor, it was difficult to get all the space warm, especially down by the floor, so... That is, you know, it's one of those, it does, you know, had we done this before, we did the air source heat pumps, it would have reduced the amount of oil we were more burning or whatever for gas or whatever we were using down there, which would have been nice as well. But it was brought more to a head because of that, because their size here specifically, and we've got more heat lost than they're really sized to handle or kind of work with properly.
Electric also increase the damage, like, because the floors are so cold with that.
Right. Well, right, and we switched to an electric heat versus a gas or oil heater.
But maybe if we were insulated...
And that would, that should help reduce...
Less stress on the pumps.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's, it is mostly...
But, but we're focused on comfort, too, I mean, that's the reaction.
You want $13,000 for Tammy's feet? I just want, we're talking about...
Yeah, you can be clear about that, and I'm okay with it, my feet are worth it. What are we going to do about upstairs?
So there, like, we can, we can look at, and I actually got one of the quotes from Snug, was to do insulation in the roof and storm windows upstairs, and that would also make a big difference up there. I've not heard people complaining as much as I've heard complaining about the floors, so...
Well, no, my concern is like the plumbing and the pipes and the things that are upstairs, that if it's not heated are going to burst.
Right.
I mean, there's plumbing all over upstairs.
Right. We went, when we, when I walked through with Snug at one point, we had a kind of a conversation of, should we add some heaters up there, should we just close off one of the bathrooms that no one ever uses, or are they used, that kind of thing. I don't have a conclusion on that. If there are spots that we're particularly worried or actually have had issues with freezing pipes or whatever, like, we can, we should figure that out and address that certainly, but I'm kind of trying to find the places where there's the most speaking room.
But we still have the boiler, so we could turn that off right in the winter time.
We do.
I mean, if it's sealed downstairs now, then the heat is going to rise...
But it defeats the purpose.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but...
So ideally, yeah, we shouldn't be using that anymore, but if it, you know, if there's...
We didn't everything freeze upstairs this winter, did we?
Right, I mean, that's, we didn't have any, no, we didn't have anything upstairs.
No, but the boiler ran all winter. The boiler ran all winter, because if it hadn't, I would be a couple feet shorter.
So I think we kind of, it sounds like a little bit of an error approach, let's, let's figure out how we get the, the really, the biggest issue, which was the downstairs comfort, figured out. And it will should reduce the costs, you know, because you, we were cranking that thing all the way up to 110% to try and keep the floor warm, which still wasn't happening, and we'll see where we end up at that point.
Okay, great, thank you.
How do you realize it's for upstairs, huh?
Well, that's, I mean, that's part of it.
He likes his office like a cold cave.
Is that basically no one goes upstairs, except for...
Perfect for me, it would...
It works for our winter, and yeah, the heat is rising from downstairs, and so it's keeping it reasonable, and hopefully it wasn't all...
So they don't want the boiler running either.
So it's a balmy 58 degrees, it's perfect for, nothing's going to freeze it there.
You're going to be very lonely up there, all by yourself.
So did you want to move that?
Yeah, so I'll move that we, a press of referendum for $13,000 from the building repair, what is it, building?
Building, the village building reserve.
Village, village building reserve, for the purpose of weather sealing the basement and crawl spaces.
Second with the friendly, I know that it's up to...
Up to, yes. Thank you.
Still have fun.
No, I'm taking like, I'm taking the rest. Locking it back.
That wouldn't have been friendly.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion, questions, comments, concerns, or contributions?
I think it's has some concerns, but it feels like they're best out of it.
And if not, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
And to be, and to be clear, we're, we're good with leaning towards, we're going with Snug for that work.
I think, I think it's a good idea, what you suggested, have to sharpen their pencil a little bit on the number.
Okay.
Any other old business? New business, we have the second annual T-Bird crit. I'll let Keith address most of this from the perspective of the Chamber. So yeah, I'll add it, I'll add it in. So basically, what has been requested of this board is to offer a somewhat formal sponsorship, village-backed sponsorship of, of the race, just to kind of give it the official nod of support from the village government. The Chamber feels strongly this is an important event. They've already seen it bringing racers back after the race has completed. This is going to be only our second year of doing this, but it will be our first hosting the New York State Championships, which will increase the number of riders. It's expected that the riders, or the participants, interesting, will come here two or three times before the race to test the course. So in an area that relies very heavily on tourism to sustain itself, this is, has the potential to become a really big annual staple to benefit us economically. Everyone recognizes that it does come with the sacrifice of closing down our streets, streets which affects our neighbors and our residents in the race zone, and I think the organizers are doing everything they can to give notice. I think they were getting the word out back in the springtime for an August 10th race date. There's only so much you can do there, there's no doubt about it, that closing off streets for six, seven hours is going to make Saturday difficult for the people that live there. But I think the idea is that this stands to have tremendous benefit for our village and for our surrounding community, bringing people over 100, 100 to 200, just in racers, plus all their friends and families to our village annually, and, you know, there's a lot of places throughout New York State that would love to have that opportunity. And so I think we're lucky, and I thank all of our neighbors and residents who are willing to, you know, support this. Many are in the race line and do support it, and they love it, and they have great viewing areas for the race, and they're willing to, to make the sacrifice for the event. Some are not as happy, we've heard from some, and, you know, I take that very seriously, I think we all do, but I think, my opinion is, it would be a good move by the board to show our support for the race and show that we're unified behind it, that the organizers work really hard, the organizers are villagers, business owners in the village, and I think it's, it's worthy of our endorsement. So two points of clarification. One is, you know, this is not now a village event, it is not a village-run event, it's not a village-organized event. What the race organizers are asking for is some type of de facto sponsorship, you know, they're not looking for money and a name on a banner, but they want us to, to essentially put our seal of approval on holding the event as the race organizers shall organize, and then in so doing, we would then be agreeing to lend whatever services from the various departments that they might need to make it run as efficiently as possible. One of those particular concerns that I'm sensitive to from some of the residents along the race route is, is access, how do they get in and out? So my conversations with the race organizers is, if the village does choose to take a more active role in, in assisting this event go forward, one way is obviously through communications channels, social media, online, et cetera. I don't see the village spending money in the way of paying for mailings, that's the organizers' role, and that's what they have taken on gladly, but one thing that we can do is, in addition to whatever police and EMS and fire presence might be already available, they will be, the race organizers will be responsible for the entry and exit from various roads into the, into the race course in the village. Part of what we will be communicating is that these roads are closed to through traffic, which is a specific terminology we're all familiar with, but it is different than saying the streets are closed, we're saying it's closed to through traffic, so we're not going to allow traffic to use the roads as per normal, but if a resident needs to get out, they will be able to get out, but they may have to wait a few minutes until that next race or that next heat is done. My recollection, my personal perception of last year's race was that, you know, the 10, 12, 15 minutes between race, between actual races feels like a fairly long time when you're standing there waiting for the next one to start. I think that's plenty of time for someone who needs to, you know, get out for the rest of the day, or maybe they've come back from wherever, you know, they went fishing that morning and now they're coming home. So that will, that will, again, I haven't suggested, and I'm not suggesting that anyone from the village be manning those barricades.
I haven't suggested and I'm not suggesting that anyone from the village be manning those barricades. The type of communication that we're likely to need to produce so that people will actually understand what we mean or what's happening. So I'm also, I'm also in favor of supporting this. I think that, um, I have the, I have the, I'll say the good fortune of getting to drive through a lot of rural New York from time to time, driving from one place to another, and you can tell the difference between vibrant communities that do stuff and the ones that don't. Uh, and it's not hard to tell which ones are which. Uh, and I'm glad that we're one of the ones that do things. And I think the fact that this is a New York State Championship and it's a sport that I don't know nothing about, uh, intrigues me, so, uh. So yeah, I would support a, um, an endorsement of, of the, of the race and all that that means and the additional potential work on the communication side that it's likely to bring.
Well, the race has a schedule, so we could conceivably market those gaps widely. You say here's when, at least in this ballpark, do we expect there to be a fifteen-minute window at these times throughout the day when getting out of your neighborhood?
Um, now, do I understand there's an informational meeting Thursday?
So Thursday at Garrett's. Eight P M, Thursday, the eleventh, at Garrett's. So that's something I'll definitely be sharing.
Or eleven.
I just like it's.
So I don't have the opinion that us approving their event permit is a village endorsement. Uh, to go further, it feels a little bit extreme to me. Like, I can't imagine if grassroots were in the village and they came to us and said, give them our stuff, we would be like, yeah, totally. I find that, that somewhat problematic. Like, I agree that a vibrant community is important and I think it's government's job to sort of provide the safety and the shell that allows the community inside of that to be vibrant. I don't think it's our job to like poking, prodding, making the community vibrant by, you know, endorsing this or that event and then we run into the inevitable question of like, well, do we endorse this thing? I don't know, not really, that doesn't really align with what I think or whatever. I think, um, I heard a lot of complaints last year. I think it's a really cool event personally, but a lot of complaints, I have concerns, you know, if there's an ambulance that has to get in the middle of an event, who wins in a race between like twenty bikers and an ambulance? I mean, obviously that's fairly unlikely, but those scenarios do exist. I, I have concerns. Uh, personally, I think it's a really cool event. As an official, and as an official body, I don't think it's an appropriate event for us to endorse, especially not so wholeheartedly. Like I said, I think the event permit basically is endorsement. I mean, we say, okay, your plan is good, we will allow that to go through.
Yeah, we have, um, you know, we, yeah, I, I understand what you're saying and I, and I see the concerns, you know, the United States, the U S Cycling Association approves the race, so they have national race, race people on the course.
And I think they do a really great job.
No, but specifically addressing the safety issue, they have protocols in place where ambulance has to come up.
I'm sure that you, but do people know about those protocols?
The racers do.
Right, but if you're at home and you're like, oh, should I go to the hospital?
That'll be great.
You know, I mean, like, obviously, we're getting a little bit.
That's the old ambulance billing argument. You're gonna call nine-one-one if there's a emergency.
I have been in the hospital for the last two weeks and there have been a lot of like, do we, don't we? Do we, do we take this to the next level? Don't we? And those repercussions, they stack up, you know, I mean, it's, it's not, not an emergency like, oh my god, my heart hurts. There are a lot of levels there. Um, and I don't mean to like ring alarm bells, I'm just saying, you know, I think those, you know, we're an official government body, we don't get to just sort of say, yeah, that's a cool event.
So to that, to that point, you know, when someone, when someone files a, an event permit to close Prospect Street for a block party, I don't believe that the village is endorsing the block party when we approve the event permit. We're allowing something to occur in the village right away, that's not necessarily.
We're endorsing it to the degree that we say your plan is adequate, right? I mean, we're not a, a village logo on very.
The other, the other thing that's different about this versus kind of the block party version of event permit is the chamber's requesting this. So we are a member of the chamber and a, in a sense, a local partner organization is requesting that the village take a more active role in the, in the endorsement of it. Um, I'm okay if we don't. Essentially, we're still going to offer some type of logistical effort, you know, assistance if needed. Um, but it's a little bit different flavor when, you know, when the T-Bird Chamber asks.
That's true.
I do feel like it's different in that when we get these requests for permit, nine, I feel like nine times out of ten, it doesn't even come to the board. I mean, and, and maybe it doesn't need to or should necessarily, if it's something small like, you know, whatever, closing up a block for an hour or two and all the neighbors want to go. The heads of the departments are on board, like, great. Um, but it doesn't come before this board. So I feel like it is separate to be asked specifically as this board to take an action one way or another on, on a particular event. And I wouldn't mind if other events wanted to ask for that. It's somewhat ceremonial, but I do like the implication that it can bring some amount of support and logistics behind that as well. And certainly, this is one of the larger events that happens more impactful, you know, either than, really Winterfest, right? I think it's one of the bigger ones. Um, and if we have an ability to kind of be more supportive of it in, in like a logistical standpoint, for the benefit of everybody, um, I think it could be helpful to engage in that.
I think also, because it's so new and it is very unique in the fact that it shuts down a significant part of the village for six to seven hours. I think there might be some sentiment out there that not, and because not everyone knows the face of the organization or the organizers, there might be this sentiment that it's, things have not been thought of, like the emergency response and by the village offering an endorsement. I think that gives some clout to the fact that we know this is a big undertaking, but we've talked to the organizers, you know, we've heard, we've heard the concerns, it's been done openly. I think that's important here.
And I think at the very, at least, even if the village were not to, you know, we use this word endorse, what does that really mean? I think the village, last year, the village's stance was, this is a private event, they applied for an event permit and if you want to know information, go ask the event folks. I think the village should take a much more active role in assisting and facilitating the communication piece this year, which is then gonna beg the question from some folks, well, what's the village's role? Um, I think, I think it's not necessary, but you know, the kind of the, the, we endorse this event the same way we do Winterfest, which is not a village event anymore. Could be helpful, but I don't know that it's necessary. But certainly, I think facilitating the communication and the dissemination of information should be.
I'm, I'm on board for helping with that. I mean, to me, that's the critical piece, is that people know what's going on, you know, that if they do that, they can get out, you know, you know. But I mean, where's, I, so I do like the idea that the, the chamber has a request in this, is it, is it somewhat unique stance or circumstance? But do we then approve anything or endorse anything that they request? I mean, that like, they're, not that there needs to be, but like, I mean, obviously, you gotta make these things go, but just, I think that's worth keeping in mind, but.
Is it safe then? Is it, is it, does it feel okay or is it safer then just to say we're not going, we wouldn't do any type of, uh, and in a way, a formal endorsement? I'm not even sure what that means, but that the, the board is okay with assisting with the communications channels in, in whatever way might be necessary to help facilitate people knowing what, what is happening and when and where.
I mean, to me, that's just a public service really. I mean, that's, I think that's critical.
What is our connection with the, um, community in Garrettstown? Wait, do you, is that a, like, village-run thing? Cause I know we're very involved in it.
Um, it was started by Deb Nocke and Deb Nocke was a member of this board and also sat on the chamber board. Um, and we've just kind of rolled with it for the last eight years or whatever it's been. I do the map and, um, that kind of thing. And we produce the maps and we put them out. Um, so I guess it is a village event. I mean, the chamber really doesn't do much, um, with that. And it, just for clarification, we still do some things for Winterfest. We still, we provide police.
Even though we handed that to the chamber.
Right, we hand it over the festival, but there are still some things that we do, um, the village and the office and as far as the police protection and additional police, so, and our, the village of Truanceburg is always on the program. So I think those two chamber events, which are truly chamber events, we, we have been endorsing, um, almost as well, Winterfest as long as I've been here.
So what, I guess that's a good question, is what does that actual? Well, if we, if we take this to a vote, what are we, exactly are we voting on? So what would that look like?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's less, it's less formal than that. There isn't a village action being taken. It's more an agreement by this board to help facilitate someone else's party.
I mean, I see it, Ben's point, there's a part of that wishes more organizations asked us for this. Typically, not only are they using, I mean, they're, they're asking for a permit, but it's also a nice acknowledgement that we realize we're using, you know, potentially using your police, using your emergency services are on standby, you know. Would you, as elected representatives, bless this and help us facilitate information about it? I think that's, you know, potentially good practice. I'm not saying we should be in the business of chasing people down and asking them to bring that to us, but if they do wanna bring that to us, I think it should be encouraged and it should lead to a discussion like we're having now, and maybe there's situations where it's, you know, that's, that's not on a scale where the village feels it needs to be involved. I mean, if grassroots came to us, I'd be able to have that conversation, even though they're not even in the village. They might as well be.
I guess my point though, so we run into this on the intermission whenever we write a program about, you know, saying what summer camps are available and this kind of thing, is to what degree do you vet programs that you then sort of tacitly or explicitly endorse? So are we vetting their safety procedures? Are we, how many degrees are we getting when we say? That said, to me at least, all that stuff goes out the window if we're not actually putting our seal on their publicity. If we're just helping, and I'm totally on board, I think that's great. Any way that we can facilitate, it seems like it's worth doing. It's the like explicit endorsement, sort of putting our, our seal on, on their work that makes me nervous unless we're gonna really vet and be very like time to come about their procedures.
So let's leave it then, if, if everyone's agreeable, let's leave it then that we are agreeing to, uh, help facilitate communications and information. Not only the dissemination, but also the production of information as needed to facilitate this event, which is a month and two days away. It can start this week with Thursday night's meeting, which I think I'm gonna try to be at too. And then go from there, if that, that makes sense. Yeah? Does that sound okay?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm. I, I would just say, you know, me personally, I, I would not be afraid to have our logo on their stuff. I, I think this is an event the village should be proud of. We should be welcoming these two, three hundred people into our community, showing that the village welcomes them and is behind us and we're not giving any money towards it.
Do they do a program like, I, I'm just thinking like the fair does a program and we buy advertisement in the fair book, I mean, the village doesn't really need to advertise, but we've been doing that for probably as long as the fairs been around.
I think there's a website, there's, the U S Cycling Association has these races, these section races in their system, which you can look up in theory forever, see where the race was, who won. Um, and I, and I don't disagree, I, I like the idea of, of supporting it. There is a part of me also that doesn't wanna give the race organizers, not that they would, but I don't want them to think that because it was successful one year, now we wanna big foot them and make it a big village event, but if it had failed and we want no part of it, I'm sure we don't, we don't give that impression, which I don't think they would get, but I don't wanna give anyone else that impression either.
But it's an elevated race now too.
It is.
I didn't really know anything about it last year, to be honest with you. It kind of, I think that was part of, it was a little bit of a mystery, is the, you know, where it came from and what it's, what it is. And a lot of us had to get up to speed in a hurry.
Well, I think maybe we can, maybe a heavy medium is, you know, the chamber is certainly involved. The village can, you know, if people ask Thursday night, the village, our, our position can simply be that we welcome community-based events and we welcome events in the village that bring people from outside the village or increase tourism. And when asked, unless we see a conflict of some kind, then we will, we're happy to help get the, you know, get information, provide information to residents and anyone else about these events. Without graying this line of is it a village event, isn't it a village event, is the village sponsoring it, isn't the village sponsoring it? Maybe it's just more of a, maybe it's simpler than that.
The welcoming phrasing, I think is important, but, but Keith, just to say, I don't think, I think maybe the difference between us here is that you've been involved in the planning and I have not.
No, I, I've not been involved in planning, I just.
Cause to me, I, it's the difference between saying it's really cool from my personal perspective, but I go, I just want to be clear about that line. I don't disagree, disagree, and we should support it. Just, I just want to make sure that that is, and I tend to skip me on occasions. I'm trying to be clear.
No, I just think, you know, it's, it's an all-day event, it's big, it's bringing in a lot of people, it's closing a lot of streets, it's using a lot of our services. It kind of looks odd that we might not wanna put our seal on it. We're, we're dedicating so much to it, yet we're kind of just, we're afraid to.
I feel like we're being like.
We're kind of distancing ourselves from it.
I feel like we're being a little hand-wigging, like, did you have a specific motion, resolution, something that we should push, that we should actually like vote on? And I'm not pushing that we actually just go ahead with that, I'm just like, trying to understand specifically, cause I feel like this is not much different than Winterfest, it's another large event that's fairly disruptive to traffic that is supported and run by, well, not run by in this case, but supported by the chamber. And I think the village is welcome to support it. I don't know what the word is, like, endorse versus support. Like, I guess I'm wondering, like, is there something specific that we could, that you were thinking of pushing, of like wording this or, or asking? Like, what were, what were we gonna vote on here? Or what were we gonna vote on?
Yeah, well, that wasn't, that's what I was kind of asking, what would be, I think, I think it sounds like the difference, what we're talking about here, the two differences are, do we just say we're communications, uh, communications vehicle to get information out to the constituency? Or are we saying, we're gonna do that, and you know what, if you wanna put village of Truanceburg on your marketing materials, you can do that too, to show a more official sponsorship, uh, that isn't like.
Yeah, it is, but in whatever way we support Winterfest, uncomfortable supporting the crit. And so it sounds like our logo goes on the Winterfest program, I don't know if there is a program for the crit and we can put something on there. Not to say that we have like reviewed this and found it a gleaming example of a, an event here, but to say like, this is an event that we like to see in the village, that is supporting the village, that is beneficial to the village and we say, yes, this is something we'd like to see more of and we're happy to help you with our resources where we can, kind of the thing.
What about, so Winterfest, we buy a, it's like a little piece that we bought, right, in their ad, or in their booklet? Or they just, they just put us?
Yeah, I mean, because we help, I mean, and that's what it all comes down to.
But it's with all the advertising, isn't it?
I'm not sure where it is anymore, if it's just on the, I used to, when I did the programs, I did it on the back, you know, like little footnotes at the back. But I mean, it could be something as simple as a banner at the, at, over Main Street that says, you know, welcome crit attendance or racers or whatever. Now, the village of Truanceburg welcomes, you know, welcomes the two thousand and nineteen.
Actually, the more I think about it, the more I think it's actually a lot simpler. You know, it is, although this is not a chamber event, the primary race organizer is a Main Street business. Um, so the village has always taken the stance that if it, if it's a chamber event and or. So the Village has always taken the stance that if it, if it's a Chamber event and/or Main Street businesses are involved, then unless there's some, you know, significant practical negative, then the Village is generally supportive of those things. And it, and it hasn't really ever needed anything formal for us to do that. And in a way, maybe last year was the mistake in that we didn't lend more logistical support when we probably should have.
Oh, yeah, I think the management is really.
Yeah. So I think maybe, maybe, maybe it is just simpler than, than I had initially thought. And so we can just move forward with the stance that the Village always takes with, with events that are driven by local business to try to, to do things that are either nice for the community or have some tangential relationship with their business that they run. And if any of that drives tourism and traffic to the Village, then fantastic. I don't know that it needs to be, needs to be more legal-like and formal than that. That's, that makes sense?
Yeah, I think so. We are in support of this and will lend resources there too.
Good. Next item under new business is actually semi-new business. We have discussed in the past a need to rewrite our personnel policy, which I am moving more to the front burner, because I have so much room in my front burner for the summer. Like to have the Village's personnel policy rewritten by say September, October, and I'll take the lead on that. The original Village personnel policy was written for DPW, because there were no other full-time employees. Now we have full-time police officers, full-time EMS department. DPW has a collectively bargained contract, so we essentially have an obsolete personnel policy. So I will be looking at, at a wholesale revision of that with individual sections for individual departments, and I'll get from the department heads, things that they would like to see in their department-specific personnel policy section, as well as some, you know, kind of general Village-wide personnel policy type issues. Two of which I would like to address tonight, and I'll actually take these out of order. Kind of the second, what is that, 11B2? The sexual harassment prevention policy. In the fall of 2018, New York State in its infinite wisdom passed some laws which require employers to have certain types of sexual harassment policies on their books, using certain types of language. They basically wrote the policy for everyone. Ours is very close, but not, not perfect. So in the Dropbox is a Guy Crowe speaking of endorsements. Guy Crowe endorsed sexual harassment policy, which I would like to approve so that we are compliant with New York State law. Approve it as a standalone document, which we will then integrate into the personnel policy when it's, when it's completely revamped. This would go in the, in the Village-wide Personnel Policy Section. So I won't.
Please don't.
Please don't ask me to. I won't read all of this. Much of it, as I say, was already contained in one, in broad terminologies in our personnel policy, but there's a lot of.
If it's not yours, don't touch it.
There's a lot of, as you can imagine, fine tuning of, of that. So unless there are questions or you do want to comb through this, I would entertain a motion to adopt the Village of Truumsburg Sexual Harassment Prevention Policy as drafted by Village Council.
So, second?
Any discussion, comments, or questions?
Is there like advertising? Do we have to like, on the way that the personnel policy comes out, play it here? Is there required training?
Yes. That is part of this is.
Is there additional? Did they raise the, because there's always been sexual harassment, did they increase it?
Yeah, we usually have a video day where everybody comes in and we watch whatever our workers comp, company has put together and have lunch and.
Is there any video?
God, I hope so, because the other one was older than I am and that's pretty old.
Legal is on VHS.
It probably was VHS.
Beta.
Real or real?
Beta.
Real or real? Any other comments, questions, concerns? Then hearing that all in favor of adopting this policy as written, we say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Going backwards now, part of the personnel policy that we will need to revisit, and I was hoping Deb would be here for this tonight. We have a, we have a police officer who believes that she was entitled to some overtime. And the reason why she believes that, and I had to go back and look, it's one of those things. She took four vacation days, and I don't know if this number is exactly right, but for the purposes of this discussion, she took four vacation days and worked her normal 10-hour shift the day she came back, and then stayed for two and a half hours after. The way the DPW contract is written, if you go over your daily shift allowance, that's overtime. The way most private sector companies work now is if you go over your nine to five, even if you didn't work more than 40 hours that week, or you took four vacation days and you happened to be the guy that has to come in on Friday and you stayed late, that's overtime. Chief Nelson was under the impression that that's how the Village would do it as well, because it's now been written into our team, into our DPW contract. However, the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act and New York State Department of Labor allow for employers to define overtime as only those hours where you actually work. Sometime back in the 90s, the Village adopted that as the definition. So now, with the exception of DPW, if someone takes more vacation days and then they work 15 hours on a Friday, those 15 hours are the only hours they worked that week, so they're not overtime eligible. I actually think that that's something we should change. However, change the policy, we should do that in the personnel policy revision. I'm open to, obviously, I'm open to discussion and conversation about whether we should change that or not. It's fairly standard, at least my experience, it's fairly standard with employers now to consider that overtime when you work more than whatever's your designated number. For police, it's 10, for EMS, it's 12. Although they can take, EMS is a different animal, we'll leave them out of it. For DPW, it's been established that it's eight. And, and that leads to a lot of collective bargaining situations where an employer says, no, you've got to break 40 for the week and we're not going to pay you overtime, even if you've worked 15 hours straight. And I'm trying to avoid that situation. So in this particular case, because it's, it's, it's spending money, I couldn't approve it on my own, I would like to approve on a discretionary basis, the payment of this, what is it, two and a half hours?
No, we, we already paid our straight time, so we only owe her halftime for two and a half hours.
Right, two and a half hours, so it's the differential.
Yeah, the differential, yes.
So the differ, I would, I would actually like the board to authorize the payment of the differential between what was paid to this officer and the two and a half hours that wasn't paid as overtime. Until such time as we can revisit the personnel policy and how we pay for overtime completely. That's my, that's my request.
Yeah, are we on board with doing it for the policy? It seems reasonable to me if that's, I mean, if that's standard.
That's, that's the discussion, that's the broader discussion. I know municipalities don't know, well, I take that back. Municipalities collectively bargain with everybody. And you, you bargained, I mean, talk about, I mean, collective bargaining units are there at the county, and every unit has their own wants and needs and desires. I will say in the private sector, it is fairly standard. You know, if I took three vacation days and I worked 20 hours on a Thursday and Friday, that was four hours of overtime. This was over my eight before I worked for this office. Then I, no, I never get paid.
Wait, well, there's a difference there. Is it over 40 hours for the week including vacation time, or is it over a day of the lock-in? Cause those would be two.
The math, the math works out the same.
So in every case, is it the same?
Pretty much every case that I, unless you're taking, unless you're taking a Monday vacation, you run out of vacation days and you use Sunday.
Yes.
Yeah. And then, and I stand corrected, that is actually what would happen. It's my eight hours of vacation, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, counted towards my hours worked for a weekend, even though I wasn't there. And that's, that's fairly standard.
But what if I worked like 10 hours one day and only worked six the next day, so like the two hours overtime the first day?
Yeah, no, I take that back. So where I was coming from is that the vacation time pushed me over the 40 for the week.
Right.
The way our policy currently stands, vacation time doesn't count at all.
Right.
So we're still talking about weekly lock-in and then overtime is only after the weekly lock-in, not daily like the day you go.
Right, the difference is whether you actually worked or didn't work. That's, that's what it comes down to, is.
Okay.
And I have never worked for anybody who did that.
That's good. You've been in the private sector 14 years.
Well, that's true, you've raised my mind.
I've, I've never worked for anybody.
Me either. You had to physically be there, you don't get overtime, that was just it.
And then, you know, the toothpaste is out of the tube because, you know, DPW negotiated that. So now, now, which is fair actually, because if they're on shift for 20 hours, you know, in a freezing water, maybe break in January, you know, you get it.
Right, I feel like overtime for the DPW is sort of a significant matter. I mean, that's going to be one of their central issues.
So there's two questions on the table. One is a longer-term discussion as we rewrite the personnel policy is, do we insist, as the law does allow, do we insist that hours worked means you're actually working? In which case, the next question would be, is it hours working on a weekly cumulative basis or on a daily shift basis? We can think about that for the next couple of months. And then question number two is, Chief, Chief Nelson is requesting, and I, and I don't have any objection to it, the payment of the differential between straight time and overtime for this officer in the amount of two and a half hours that works out to only 20 hours.
It's, yeah, it's an hour and a half.
However, that does then become precedent-setting for.
But if he's, he's asking, if he, if he thought that's how it did, and they really had that conversation and he said this is happening.
Again, so that's like. New York State Police has a gold-plated contract, so somewhere way back when, they negotiated out this language of hours worked. I won't be surprised if the language of hours worked comes out of some of the federal and state stuff at some point, because it's just.
Well, I would say at the very least, if Chief Nelson was under that impression, that was probably what was communicated to the officer, he's asking us to kind of make that whole, at least for this one situation where people were uninformed in one way or another, I think we should do that. And then we can have the conversation going forward as what do we make it actually look like in the future, and then hopefully a few months interim, then it'll just be a policy and it may or may not get changed. That's how I would look at that.
Then I would entertain a motion to authorize the clerk to calculate the differential between the straight time and overtime that was paid to the officer in question for the two and a half hours of overtime that was not paid as overtime.
I'd also often be thought that just because something had been done a certain way for a really long time, doesn't necessarily mean it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to divorce these conversations, I feel like we should.
With regards to the weekly overtime rule being precedent for a lot of organizations, doesn't necessarily mean it's the right labor approach, but that's the debate.
Do we have a motion?
So moved, sorry, hang on.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Sorry.
Any additional discussion? If nothing, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And speaking of police, I don't know if anyone, I don't know if any of the three of you have had the pleasure of diving into New York State Retirement and the New York State Retirement So you'll get a two-minute crash course. The New York State Retirement System consists not only of your place in the system based on your hire date, there are also different retirement options in terms of when you can retire and with what benefit. The broader ERS system for most state employees, teacher's system is very, very similar, has different tiers and, and the benefits are basically the same within each tier. Police and fire, there are different pension systems within the same tier, and the municipality has to decide whether to allow your police or firefighters to exist within a particular pension system. Currently, the Village of Truumsburg for police officers is in Section 375I, which is substantially similar to the regular state retirement system. You have to work, depending on your tier, we're not talking about a tier-two employee, you have to work 30 years, you have to be 55. Or your benefits are substantially cut if you don't have the 30 years or you're not 55. And so many police departments around the state and most of Tompkins County's police departments have opted into a different police retirement system known as 384D, in which police officers can retire after 20 years, regardless of age. At 20 years, they are eligible for 50% of their final average salary, which is a calculation based on your three highest earning years, as long as one of those years is 10% higher than the previous. It's funky, it's, it's fuzzy math, but bottom line is, they can retire after 20 years, they get 50% of their final average salary after 20, regardless of age, there's no penalty for only being 42. And you don't get additional credit for working 22, 23, or 24 years. If you do stick around to 30, then you can opt into the old system, in which case you would get a bit of a bigger benefit. The reason a lot of police departments or a lot of municipalities have opted for this is you actually end up phasing out your higher-earning police officers in exchange for lower-earning police officers sooner. And the reason why a lot of police officers like it is they get to retire with half of their salary when they're in their 40s, they don't have to wait until 55 or 60 or 62, depending on their tier. We have one of our new, unbeknownst to us, one of our full-time police officers came from a department where she, she was in the 20-year retirement. Since we don't offer that now, it has put a significant wrinkle into her planning, which is not necessarily a Village issue. However, Chief Nelson is in favor of moving the Village to the 20-year retirement plan. He feels that it will give the department the ability to turn over a full-time officer at the back end sooner. The cost differential is in the Dropbox, we, it took us a while, but we finally got something in writing from New York State Retirement, which is the other fun thing about them is, it takes, it feels like you're sitting on a hold with them. There's no one for a long time.
The word?
The, the cost to the Village, because the Village pays into the retirement system based on what tier people are in, the cost to the Village, the difference is about $4,700 a year. So that's the request. And wanted to get everyone's take on it. Nancy knows about the state retirement system.
I do.
Happily, happily so.
Yeah, that's right, when we started, we're saying careers.
Yes, that's right.
Good night, Nancy.
So that's the request, and I'm bringing it to the board.
Strong lack of feeling about that. And I think it's, to me, it seems like every police officer I've ever talked to, this was like a thing that exists and is like a game. I didn't even realize that we had a choice, I just assumed this was like.
Yeah, most, so we're under the older system, it's 30 years, 30 and 55. Sheriff's departments have a choice between 20 and 25. Our sheriff department is actually 25, 25 years. Most of the police departments around here are 20, but, but not all. Poor Morgan down there is going to work till she's 80 to get.
Thank God, somebody's helping Morgan.
I'm paying for you.
Paying for me, that's right, you're such a good girl.
I don't align either which way, again, I kind of defer to Chief, the way you want to run this department.
Does it ultimately change everyone or just this particular officer?
I would change everyone. That was the quote they gave us.
That's right.
You can't, you can't have multiple, you can't have multiple options, so that, that is what we were waiting on, the number 40. what we were waiting on, the number, $4,700 a year. When the municipality opts into the new, the new system, it affects everyone in the department, not village-wide, but only in the department, in the police department. Your part-timers are accruing time at a much slower rate, so it's going to take them, you know, if they work five hours a week, it's going to take them a really long time to get 20 years of service.
Does this mean, like, if our other full-time officer doesn't want to retire after 20 years, that they all stop?
No, you can work, it's your choice whether you work past 20.
Right, but you're not...
But you're not going to get any additional benefit.
Correct.
Until you hit that 30.
Until you hit 30. Then if you hit 30, then you can individually opt into the other state system, in which you would get more benefits.
An option, that's very cool. You can choose as an employee.
Only, only, only at the back end, though. You only get the choice after you've worked a really long time.
Right. There's no benefit if you work from 21 to 29, you need to...
You need to go through so many...
That's what I'm thinking.
When I talked to Deb.
For us.
Right, so I mean, there's, there's a economic incentive advantage if people choose to freeze out, for the villagers' interest. Can we ask them? I mean, I assume that one definitely wants to do it, I mean, can we ask the full-time officers and say...
Do I, is what I understand is property, right now, as it stands, you don't get any benefit from 20 to 30 either, because you don't get anything till you hit 30, right? Is that, like, our current plan?
Current system, you can't retire after 20. I mean, take that back. You can, you can retire after 20, you will have, you didn't want to know all this, but in the 30-year system, you earn essentially 2% of your final average salary for every year of service. So if you retire after 20, and you're 55, depending on what tier you're in, then you can retire and get your 40%. But if you retire after 20, and you're only 40-something, then you're eligible for the 40%, minus a subtraction for every year you're under whatever the magic age is. Now, the other officer is in tier four or tier six.
Oh, he's six.
The most recent New York State retirement tier, which is completely separate from all of this conversation, you have to basically work to 62. You have to have 30 years at 62 to collect your full retirement. You're eligible to start collecting at 55, but it's reduced from your 62 number, it's almost like a social security calculation. Here's your number, but if you retire here, it's going to be reduced, but you still need the 30. If you don't have the 30, then it's reduced even further, because you've only earned a certain amount per year.
I feel like the take-home is there's very few of any situations where this isn't beneficial for the employee.
Very few, unless you get, you know, our one full-time officer is very young, so he'll be 43, 44 after 20, so if he does decide to work longer, he's going to have to work another 10 to get any, any more benefit. But by that point, if he's still working, he'll, because he wants to...
Right, but if we're still under the old system, he'd be pretty screwed, he wouldn't be able to drop off at 20, so anyway. So this only seems to give more flexibility generally.
That is true.
Except that it does require him to leave if he wants to retire after, say, 20. Right, you can switch departments or something, or are you locked in permanently?
No, if you so, well, so there's...
There's no such thing as permanent.
If you switch departments, and you switch, so this is what, what's happened to...
Right, right.
Officer number one, if you switch departments, you go into whatever retirement contract that municipality's adopted for that department. And if that means that you now need to work longer, that's a detriment to you. If it now means you need to work shorter, well, that's a bonus for you. And so it is, it is dependent on where you work. There's actually one very interesting situation, not to get too far into the weeds. We had a police officer that we hired back in 2008. He was one of the first people that was hired when I was, came on the board, and he was one of the last tier-two police officers hired in New York State. Worked here for like nine months and went to Cornell. Cornell University's not, the police department's not in the state retirement. He worked there for 10 years, they make a lot of money at Cornell PD, and then he realized, or someone figured out for him, that if he were to go to IPD and take a $40,000 a year pay cut, because of his original hire date here, he would be a tier-two 20-year retirement. And so...
Based on his income while at Cornell?
No, based on his income at IPD, which would take him five years to catch up to what he was making at Cornell, but then he would get the big pension number in 20 years. There's no pension at Cornell. And so he, he bit the bullet and he decided to do it, all because of his original New York State retirement system hire date here, so it's interesting stuff.
I guess what I'm saying is that there's, there's no, like, downside to someone who's early on, who joined early, because they couldn't do anything until they're 30. Now they're getting an option to do something at 20, or 25 if they want to, or wait till 30 and then get a bigger bump, which they would have gotten under our current plan. Like, it seems to only give additional flexibility.
I'm on the board.
Then I would entertain a motion to... It's actually a fairly good one. Let me look at that. Pierre, first, Pierre's there. You're cold?
I'm freezing.
I turned it off.
What, the air?
This is a beautiful temperature. I'm a little bit warm, maybe.
A little bit. What you're saying is, it's warmer, warmer.
Can't wait till your wife's hit 50, it's going to suck for you, and I'm going to...
You know what, I was actually just thinking about this, because everyone I work with is from home, so everyone gets their own temperature, and it's just not a problem.
Yeah.
So I'll actually read, it's very short, I'll actually read the language of the resolution that we need to fill out and send to New York State Retirement. It says, "At a meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Truansburg held at Truansburg, New York, on July the 8th, 2019..." I'll call for a first.
First.
Ben Darfler, trustee Ben Darfler, offered the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Truansburg does hereby elect to provide the pension benefit of Section 384D of the retirement and social security law as presently or hereafter amended for any member who duly elects to enroll in this plan, this is for police officers only. Be it further resolved that the effective date of such shall be the 15th day of July So that was the first, do we have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? If not, then all in favor?
Sorry, we've done it.
If not, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number 12, for those keeping score at home, approval of abstracts. We have General Fund Abstract Number 14, this is, it looks like a hangover from, hangover from the last fiscal year. General Fund Abstract in the amount of $3,593.65.
Will we approve that?
Motion, do we have a second? Any discussion?
Is that the one with the polo and shorts, or is that the next one? There's one item that's like a polo and...
Let's see, or polo, it's like this one.
Polo and shirts?
Shirts.
That would make more sense, polo shirts would make more sense.
Never know, it's a shorts, it's a polo, it's something with there.
Pitney bows, stat pads with a Z, and EDR gets paid.
Oh, good, we're getting emails about that.
Points.
So we have a motion and a second, and is there any additional conversation about polo shirts?
Where's the polo shirts? I think that's the other one, that's the one for one.
If not, then all in favor of paying this abstract, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Still, in last fiscal year, cleaning up, we have Water Fund Abstract in the amount of $154.20. Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Last piece from last fiscal year is a Sewer Fund Abstract in the amount of $63.08 to Stover Lumber.
Will we approve that?
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, move on, back to the future. Current fiscal year, General Fund Abstract Number Two, in the amount of $219,229.85.
Yes. Will we approve that abstract? I also should just point out that the polo and shorts aren't for the bike. Thank you, thank you.
Motion, do we have a second?
Who wishes?
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? She doesn't think it's appropriate.
That's all she gets. She needs to take care of her, no, look at her.
Start not approving things, or she's going to be... All in favor, then, of paying this General Fund Abstract, please say aye.
Aye.
EMS Billing Abstract, $15,103.88.
Will we approve that EMS billing abstract?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a Water Fund Abstract, $14,708.37. Health insurance.
Will we approve this abstract?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Sewer Fund, $12,723.54.
Will we approve that abstract?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Hopefully, one of our last...
You've got the email, I sent you guys the email.
We're getting there.
It was an error, it wasn't part of the, the brand, camera.
So we have a small bill left over from the capital improvement water well project in the amount of $1,294.71.
Will we approve that abstract?
Second. Any discussion?
Not the fourth last one.
No, that was the side one, we can air that marketing, the image for this particular company.
So hopefully, the last last.
Yeah, it should be the last last.
The last last, the final last.
For now.
Check, or we can franchise another one system.
All in favor of paying this water well project abstract, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And last but not least, Trust and Agency Abstract in the amount of $2,742.50.
Will we approve that?
All the union dues. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. I see no one from the public for our second public comment, period, and so I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss EMS personnel. All in favor?